We will all have an opportunity to comment. If you have an interest in commenting, you certainly can put that in the chat, put any questions you may have in the chat as well. Um, we'll take as again at the end, we'll take comment. You can raise your hand verbally, or you can use the zoom feature to do that. Um, when we, when we do get to the point of taking comment, I'm going to offer the, any elected officials or appointed officials. Who are at this hearing, an opportunity to speak first. Um, then people in the zoom call and then maybe phone callers. Uh, we will recognize at the end and, and offer them the ability to comment. Um, we hope to limit comments to two minutes. Um, we'll get a sense early of how many commenters there are. Um, that two minutes can certainly be extended and people can certainly get back in line, but. Um, to give everybody the opportunity to uh, express their. Opinions, um, we are initially looking at a two minute window to do that. And finally, as I said, this is, this is really not a question and answer period. This is more of a um. An opportunity to hear from you. Um, today verbally and with the hopes that we get written comments by November seventh. By five P M. Um, Monday, November seventh is the deadline for comments. How to do that? I'll explain and show you later in this presentation. So a little history here, I mean, what we're talking about is, um, you know, there's a few changes, but the primary change that has garnered the most attention is the obvious conditioning of registrations. The history of registrations, the Water Management Act allowed. Existing users to register their water use based on what they were doing from nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-five. The original, the original registrations. Um, included conditions, the conditions of minimal, they were, um, you were to reme- meter your withdrawal volumes. Make sure your meters were working and report to D E P what you were withdrawing. So we had a way to uh. Evaluate compliance with what you were registered for. Registrations were good for ten years. Um, they were, you know, initially i- issued in the late eighties, early nineties. Um, they were renewed in nineteen ninety-seven. They were renewed again in two thousand and uh, at the end of two thousand and seven, they were renewed for two thousand and eight, moving for eighteen of. For a ten year period. In the two thousand and eight registration renewal, we included conditions. Um, performance standard conditions that we had been applying in permits of sixty-five gallons per per person per day. In public water systems. And unaccounted for water. Value of ten percent or less were included as a condition. Um, another condition was including requiring that people implement water use restrictions, summer demand management plan. Um, not totally unlike what we're proposing now. Um, those conditions were appealed, that appeal made its way to the state Supreme Judicial Court. Who decided um, in the Fairhaven decision. Uh, lined that um, D E P had the authority to condition registrations, but that we needed to promulgate regulations to do so. Um, hence where we are today. The um, the fourth bullet here gets into a point, I'll explain a little more detail eh, later, but um. As I said, registrations are generally good for ten years, but because of um, a permit extension act that extended them by four years. And by the covid. Order that came out, it extended another four hundred and sixty-two days. That ten year cycle has extended to the point where they are now set to expire next April in twenty twenty-three. So now's the time, if we want to condition them to do so, to get them ready for the um, their renewal uh, early next year. Um, a frequent question is registered versus permitted. Uh, this is a summary of. The uh, water management program and who, who we do regulate. Um, outlined on your left are the various industry types. Um, excuse me. Public water suppliers, P W S. We have um. How many we have of each type? We have one hundred and eighty-one permits, sixty-three registered only users, and then how much is allocated? Via those registrations and permits. You can see we have nearly eight hundred million gallons per day. Allocated to public water systems permitted as a hundred and twenty-seven million gallons per day. Um, you can see that statewide, that represents, you know, seventy. Nearly seventy-two percent of our total allocated water use. And then you can see various sectors uh, moving down. And um, eh, you, public waters players obviously is, is our biggest. The, the other category is a catch-all. That can be anything from a, a fish nurture, a fish hatchery to a ski area to. A sand and gravel operation. So there's a wide range of others there. Um, that, and that represents roughly eighteen percent of our total water use. Overall, registrations represent eighty-six percent of our total water allocation. I will say that if you, if they have a permit condition, then the permit often apply to the total water use. Um. So permit conditions do apply to roughly fifty percent of the water. So as mentioned, the, the, the primary driver of our proposed reg change at this point is. Um, during periods of drought, we, we are trying to provide some uniformity or consistency in conditions. This is a map that the Water Management Program prepares and publishes um, throughout the course of the irrigation season from May through September. Uh, this just is a July of this year. And it's representing how water use restrictions that we were made aware of. Um, were being implemented across Massachusetts. Um, you can see a wide range with um. You know, communities doing voluntary restrictions, what's here, the yellows to the orange. Uh, the darker orange that are one day or less. So uh, in these communities or other in the darker orange, they can irrigate um, one day outside the hours of nine to five. Um, is all they're allowing your system. Some don't allow it at all. So there, there's a wide range of what happens during droughts and what this proposed reg change would. Um, provide more consistency to that. Um, as you know, the, the reg change is re- really narrow. There are changes. We're adding two definitions to the regulations. We are proposing the conditioning registrations, which is thirty-six oh seven, where the conditions are. Um. Thirty-six seventeen, as I mentioned previously, um, we, between the permit extension act. And the covid order, it played havoc with our permit schedule, so it's to try to get our permits back on schedule. Um, and then finally, there's some kind of house cleaning on orders, violation of penalties. We're um, making. Clarifying some uh, language around our authorities there. Uh, these conditions um. Were. We put these similar conditions out with the exception of the thirty-six seventeen, the third bullet. Last year in June, July of twenty twenty-one, we put them out for comment. Um, the, the reg change about the dates came in because of the covid order, and one of the reasons we're doing this again is to uh, update these. Issues. So the, the primary condition uh, that garnering the most attention has to do with. Our proposal to condition registrations during periods of drought. Uh, we are trying to align. The. Registration conditions to what is in the current state drought management plan. The state drought management plan, which was revised in twenty eighteen. Um, or twenty nineteen. Require, it recommends, it has recommendations on what water use should be done during the various levels of drought. So you can see outlined below is what is in that state drought plan that um, for example, level one during a mu- you know, a mild drought. That outdoor, non-essential water use be limited to one day per week before nine A M. And after five P M. When watering is more efficient. Um. And then it, it gradually reduces down, or not gradually, at level two, we go to handheld hoses or watering cans. Again, before nine and after five. And then a ban at level three and level four. So that, that's in the drought plan, and that, that is what we're proposing to put into registrations. As mentioned, we went out with um, there's, there's two changes, two definitional changes. We're adding this definition to the regulations. It is not currently in the regulations. What you're seeing outlined here is the difference between what went out in twenty twenty-one. Um, which is primarily the blue and the changes are the red in the, in our current regulatory um, package. I, I would say the most significant change. Based on what we heard in twenty-one to twenty-two is. Um, there was an accommodation for golf courses with event venues to irrigate um. We'll call their, their flower business, uh, weddings and others us- usually have a, a photography and. Um. We wanted to accommodate those, and uh, the comment came in that we should expand the venues to not just golf courses, but to any type of facility. That is having um, those type of events. So um, that was based on some of the feedback we got on comments last year. Um, on the comments. The, the comments we received in twenty twenty-one are still under consideration. They are being reviewed. They are available for public comment. I'll show you later on where you can see those. Um, so we, we are still considering those. Um, in addition to the public water system requirement, there is a, an. A change to thirty-six oh seven to apply these conditions to golf courses. We have eighty-seven registered golf courses versus sixty-two permitted golf courses. The permitted golf courses currently, for the most part, have conditions similar to this in their permit. And this will um, make the golf courses more standardized between registered and permitted golf courses. This, this table again outlines on your left-hand side. The, the drought levels, eh, you know, level one through level four. Then it gets into the details of a golf course, how it's watered, the various landscaping types. Um, just looking at this thing to teas and greens are essential. You don't water a green. You don't have a green for very long. So we, we're not suggesting any changes to teas and greens at any level in the plan. Um, a level four, an emergency governor's declaration, um, that will be determined at that time. Where we do start making changes on the right-hand side of the table. So the landscaping and ornamentals. We say, you know, whatever you're watering normally, when we start going to drought. That you reduce that entirely with the exception perhaps of that event venue type flower watering that we discussed earlier. Um. And then in the roughs. It go from a hundred percent to fifty percent down to zero at a level two. And graduated reductions in the fairway watering. So what, what do these percentiles mean? Um, we give the golf courses that option to develop a plan perhaps based on their acreage. Or based on the time of an irrigation cycle. So if a hundred percent of the acreage or a hundred percent of the irrigation cycle is ten, ten minutes or ten acres. Um, that cut would be you would irrigate five percent of the rough. Uh, sorry, five acres of the rough or your irrigation cycle from ten minutes to five minutes. Um, and similarly reductions here from uh, ten acres to eight acres or ten acres. Ten minutes to eighty minutes to six minutes. These kind of reductions will be taken as the, the drought um, worsens. Um, there is an alternative restriction criteria pathway for public water systems. That are served entirely by, that are registered only and served entirely by surface water systems. They have to have what we're calling multi-year drought storage, which is a definition we're including. That is not less than three times the sum of their registered volume plus any required releases. So they, we want to see. Recognizing that we've had droughts going back to the sixties and even in recent years that have extended beyond one year. We chose three times that to be safe. Um. And have asked that it provided they can make that demonstration. Um. They may operate a plan for, of restrictions uh, based on that plan. So I, I mentioned there was two definitions here is that multi-year drought storage definition. Um, we have revised it again. The blue is what was proposed in twenty twenty-one. The twenty twenty-two is the red additions or strike-throughs showing how that has changed. Over the, over the year, again, based on feedback we've got in both in comments in twenty twenty-one and our advisory committee who have reviewed. These proposed changes. So if a, a, a public water supplier served entirely by surface water supplies wants to make that demonstration and they pass that. Three year, the sum of three years of their registration and any releases. They will have to develop a plan that meets D E P's approval. That outlines, um, you know, a, a, a normal drought plan that gets into. Various stages, um, trigger levels in their reservoirs, how much water is available. Um, has a seasonality component to it, so uh, dry in May is different than dry in. In September, um, and predict how these drawdown and how it's going to refill. So that, these are generally standard elements of a, a drought plan. Um, that plan will also need to get into the various triggers that are happening at each level, so. Hypothetically, at eighty percent, they reduce. Lawn watering it. Seventy percent, they go to a, a, another level of detail, um, kind of hypotheticals. They also need to, the plan needs to document how they're going to convey that information to their customers. How they're going to convey it through the public officials. And come up with a plan for and show that they have the ability to enforce and implement such a plan. And monitor the water savings that it achieves. So um, again, it's, this is not an exemption. This is an alternative path. With a plan that would show people have the ability to um, get through a drought eh, to our satisfaction. Um. Uh, common question we get is. So who's registered, who's permitted? It's this, this is a map of the state. The gray communities uh, are all. Permitted with us or covered by a permit in some way, shape or form. Um, the registered only systems are blue. Those in white communities don't have a public water system over a hundred thousand gallons per day, so they're not regulated by the Water Management Program. And they're not uh. Applicable here. And then there's the consecutive system, so. Um, M W R A sells water to all of these communities in green here. And they are what we call a consecutive system. You can see the numbers throughout um, the state. And we, you know, we're a little over sixty, I believe. Uh, registered only at this time. Uh, the two, the three triangles have changed since, and I just wanted to get the map as accurate as possible. This map was produced in June twenty nineteen. Since this map was produced, three of them have changed their status with two of them. Giving up permits, so they would now be blue, registered only, and the third one being um, now permitted where they were registered only previously. And then the, the exemption, um, this is the same map. What I've added on here are these, the communities with the yellow dot are. Registered only public water suppliers with surface water only. So the approximately um, fifteen of these. M- might. Be able to apply for or. Go down the alternative path of restrictions if they meet that criteria. Um, restrictions, permits versus registrations, so uh, I'll walk you through this. And slowly here, but so um. What we're proposing, I went through earlier on registrations. These are the conditions. Remember, one day a week. And then handheld only. Permits are a different um. Number, there's, if they meet. A residential gallons per capita day of R G P C D of sixty-five or less. Those systems have the potential to water more than those who are not meeting the state performance standard. They get to choose to irrigate based on a calendar trigger, so May through September, they just set their rules and they run with it. Or they can watch stream flow. We identify a stream flow value. What is called an aquatic base flow value is the trigger. If it hits that trigger. For three consecutive days, then they have to implement restrictions. So what are those restrictions? If you're below sixty-five. And you're doing um, either of these two, you potentially could water seven days a week. Um. Provided we don't hit a low flow trigger. So the seven-day low flow is the historical period of record. Looking at the seven lowest flows each year, kind of coming up with the average over that period of record. That becomes the uh, drought flow, we'll call it a drought flow, uh, really low flow that says seven days becomes one day. And again, stream flow, if you're below the A B F, you could water seven days a week. But you have to get onto one day a week outside the hours nine to five. If you're above sixty-five, the, the ability to do seven days a week goes away. Except if the flows are high, if you're using stream flow. Um, you get. Two days a week or one day a week. If the trigger is gone off. So um, and in addition to that, we have what we call minimization sub-basins, which most. Groundwater-driven public water suppliers are in those. They're in this two-day or one day. So um, the Cape and Islands use. An alternative approach. They use groundwater triggers instead of surface water triggers. So um, similar system, but yeah, different drivers. So that's the um. Uh, the difference between permit requirements and registration requirements. And then this slide, again, a lot of numbers. I wanted to kind of indicate how. These triggers played out. We've got two drought years, just randomly took two. Stream flow triggers. And wanted to see how those played out in the drought year of twenty twenty, the drought year of twenty twenty-two. As I mentioned, they get an aquatic base flow value, so this is June's aquatic base flow. So if flow falls below that in June. Um, for three consecutive days, restrictions need to go up, start in a permit. And again, if they're, if they're a minimization sub-basin or above sixty-five, they're watering two days a week. So. That is triggering this column. Uh, those numbers change July through September. This sixty-two is the August number. And that would be the driver for restrictions. And then you can see the seven-day low flow. So it's, it's half of the average July to September, and that's what triggers the one-day restriction. So you can see how it played out in um, well, let's use a more recent year, this year. In the Charles, the restrictions began, uh, meaning it, we were below a hundred and seventy. C F S for three consecutive days as of May eighteenth. And that continued below these two values because we went into July through July eighteenth. Um, on July eighteenth, it was three consecutive days below. The seven-day low flow. And we went to one day a week through September twelfth, where we had had some precipitation. Restrictions were able to be lifted if they chose to do that. Um, but a- after. Uh, September twenty-first, we had seven consecutive days again below the sixty-two. So restrictions went back on until September twenty-ninth. So that's how the Charles restrictions would have played out in a permit this year. And these are the restrictions. At level one, um, they started on May eleventh. Went to level two on June fifteenth, went to level three in July. Um. And we went back, conditions improved eventually bit back as of October seventh, they were back to a level two. So you can see how restrictions over here. Um, two days a week to one day a week and over here, one day a week handheld only to no non-essential. So. Um, on, on the dry, the take home to me on this is that a lot of, that the seven-day low flow is not gonna hit. A one-day a week in May and June. It's gonna hit it in July, September, uh, August for sure. That's, that's when that's happening in the permits. Um, the conditions in the permit often. These are drought years, but they, they generally go off sooner. You can see they were down to two days a week as early as May here. And uh, the conditions only kicked in in, in June on the um, registration side. So. Depending on the year and when the dry period starts, the conditions change um, from registrations to permits. Um, so off the registration condition, the other change I mentioned is to try to get our permit term expiration dates um. Consistent. And. This is kind of a generic example, but i- in our ideal world, before we had all these extensions. The initial date of permitting in a basin was August eighty-eight. Um, it went twenty years, it expired, and then a second expiration here. Um, all of them were in August uh, or eighty-eight, but. We phased them in over time, and that's generally what they look like. Because of the Permit Extension Act. And the covid order, these have been changed. So it put them into kind of four bins. The first bin were permits that they were um, renewed prior to this first expiration date. And, and those basins were the Hudson, Blackstone, Charles and North Coastal. They expired in um. Oh, seven oh eight, oh nine, the Permit Extension Act came in in two, two thousand and ten. So we renewed all of these prior to the Permit Extension Act. So they didn't get the, what the Permit Extension Act said was. The new date. Is now twenty thirty-two here. It extended that second expiration date since we had issued a new permit that extended it out. Then on top of that, the covid order, which came out, you know, a year or two ago. Extended that date that those permits don't currently say. Those permits currently say this twenty twenty-eight. That took the twenty thirty-two and kicked it out to twenty thirty-four. So um, we're acknowledging that in our reg change is that. These permits were all extended out on this backend over here of their timelines. The second round of permits, the, the column B here. They hadn't expired. So they got four years added by the Permit Extension Act. They were extended. And then we've, we renewed this entire basin, it's a very small basin, few permits before covid. So they, they got this later date. But the covid order date wasn't on it because it hadn't extended. So they're gonna kick out four hundred and sixty-two days here. Um, then we had, I'll, I'll gonna jump to D because it's the least confusing of all of them. They, they just extended. They extended beyond this date by four years. They have been administratively continued. We're working on them, so they, they have no current date of expiration. So their date isn't going to change. Their first permit was extended. Their second expiration date doesn't get extended because it's not in their current permit. They're all going to stay the same in our regs. And then C was a group who had a mix of some were extended, some were not. So the covid order applies to those that had previously been extended, but not to those who have not, that are administratively still continuing. So we've, we've created a new deadline for these basins here that puts them all in the same schedule. In the yearly twenty thirty, twenty thirty-two timeline. So it, it is a lot of moving pieces there. Um. If you're interested in more details, certainly call me and I can do that, but those are outlining the regs. Um, so as mentioned, we received a, a significant amount of comments in twenty twenty-one. They are still under review. They are on our website. Feel free to go and look at them. It's a one large file. On our page, so you'll need to scan through it if you want to look at them all, but they are all up. They're under consideration and now whatever else we get in twenty twenty-two, we expect to review and respond to and consider in that. Um, any changes we make. And, and so where are we now? We've kind of done these first three steps. We're in our second public hearing today. The comment period closes at five P M. On Monday, November seventh, so we certainly. Encourage you to get your written comments in electronically, which I'll show in a moment how to do that. Um, we are in the process of closing our office, so electronic filing is far more efficient and. Um, mo- more likely to get to me in a timely manner than paper mailings at this point. Um. December twenty-two is our expectation of when we hope to be through this process and pass revised regulations. And as I said, a lot of that is because February, March and early April are going to be processing and um. Developing new regulation, uh, new registrations to issue. So here is the how to get the comments to me. Um. I will, we will post this, maybe even today, this presentation on our website, so if you have any questions, how to get there. But um, the proposed regulations are at that location to, to view the twenty twenty-one comments. You can see the link to those. Um, the comments should be filed to D E P talks at N A S dot gov is how you would file your comments. Um, written comments certainly can be submitted. Um, I don't want to um. Bad mouth the you, mail system. Our mail system's fine, but it's just um, electronic just gets there so much quicker. So um, you can get those to us at our current Winchester Street address. We will be, we definitely on the lookout for them, but. Um, uh, again, I would put a plugin for electronic filing, and here is my contact information if you have questions. And I believe that's it. I will leave that up if anyone wants to see it and um. I think we can drop some of this information in the chat if that would help people as well.
Duane, um, it's Loudon. So just a couple of logistics. I'm sorry, my Wi-Fi dropped for, um, a period of time and back. Uh, and if you've already covered this, um, apologies, but if not, could you just speak to the notice to reviewers?
Yes, I did not. And good call. So, um, as Loudon said, uh, notice to review is so, um, we have what we're calling a notice to review is it's on one of those links I showed you. It's to call out. Um, as I said, we've introduced a definition into the regulations that, uh, defines non-essential water use. Item F allows means a use that is not required for the following and F is for irrigation of public parks and public recreational fields. So, uh, we've, we recognize that that has a lot of, um, interest. A lot of people have strong opinions about that. So we put this notice for review on our website to call that issue out to generate, um, attention for those who may have an interest in it. Um, so yes, good call, Levin. That, that is available on our website yesterday morning and, um, we encourage people to uh, voice their opinion on that topic.
And I'm going to, um, drop that link to that notice to reviewers in the chat. Uh, so I'm working on doing that right now. Um, and just to mention to folks that if you're looking for it on our website, uh, the D E P homepage has four big buttons uh, at the beginning and, uh, one of them announces, you know, uh, things that are available for public hearing. So if you go into that, then you'll, um, you know, have the option to get more detail on the water management at regs. And specifically on this, um, notice to reviewers that I'm about to give you the link to, uh, via chat. Um, and then, uh, I guess from there, folks can indicate, uh, in the chat who wishes to testify today. Um, that will help us manage, um, the time and, and making sure everybody gets an opportunity to speak.
Yeah. So I, I would ask if, if people want to put in the chat, whether they want to testify, please go ahead and do that. Um, and when you do testify, again, as Lowland said, identify your name, your affiliation. And, um, if possible, speak as slowly as you can, um, so we can all understand it. And, uh, I tell you to turn on your your screen at that point as well. So, uh, I hope I dropped my presentation. You can't see that now, right? All right, um, I'm not sharing.
No, we cannot. No, we can't. Your, your presentation's off screen, Duane. And I'm, uh, sorry, I was on the website looking for the chat, um, to the link. So I'm about to drop that in the chat now.
Okay, thanks. Um, so if anyone wants to, uh, raise their hand, is there any elected officials who would like, um, an opportunity to provide verbal testimony at this point? Um, feel free.
We have a question in the chat of, uh, when will the recordings of these hearings be available to us for review? And utilize information of, uh, their comments. This is an important part of the record for us. And timeliness of access is critical uh, to their comment development. So, um, can we commit to doing that, um, as soon as we can, like uh, later today, early part of next week?
Um, yeah, although the, I think the early part of next week, I, Kathy, I'd look to you for some, I mean, uh, it's how quickly Paul can process this and get it up.
Yeah, I would say early next week. We have to trim the, the video and then post it and we're relying on some other folks.
Okay, um, should have, uh, or a lack of an elected official, does someone want to, um, raise their hand in a, um, a zoom sense? And so I'd be happy to call the first person who raises the hand. Uh, love and just put in the link to the notice to reviewers. So, um, if, if nobody's raising their hand electronically, um, you certainly can turn on your screen and, um, raise your hand or, uh, speak if anyone wants to testify. Um, Jamie, you are first in line, so feel free to unmute.
Thank you. I'm gonna lower my hand as well. Thank you, everyone. Um, I'm gonna repeat my comments from last night just because there's a different audience today. Um, my name is Jamie Bartek, Communications Manager, Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. Um, the commission is opposes the proposed regulations and our rationale includes the following. But first and foremost, I, once again, we must state unequivocally that we do not disagree with the need to prepare for drought. We know climate change is real. We see it and we incorporate climate resiliency and adaptation into all of our work. But simply stated, as actual practitioners of water supply management, we find these regulations too broad brush and unspecific to, um, solve the problem they reportedly, um, intend to solve. So every public water system is unique, each with its own hydrological characteristics. These proposed regulations appear designed for regions and watersheds in the state with very different water supply challenges and development patterns than ours. As a public water supplier, it is in our interest to prevent our reservoir from getting dangerously low and we never have. We know climate change creates more deviations from historic weather patterns, but in that regard, we are well positioned. Consider this, we are legally entitled to draw, withdraw thirty-nine point one M G D, but our average annual consumption is now thirty M G D. As with many other water utilities in the state, the continued trend is downward. This is a growing margin of safety and reflects an adoption of conservation practices among customers as well as a reduction of unaccounted for water by the commission without being asked to. For that reason alone, we find these regulations unnecessary. Further, the proposed regulations provide an exemption for utilities with a three-year storage of their authorized withdrawal, resulting in only one large wholesale system, let's be real, that would qualify for the exemption and a patchwork of drought restrictions among towns. The exact opposite of uniformity the proposed regulations aim to create. We find this exemption to be arbitrary and not scientifically based. D E P's own drought management plan refers to A W W A's M sixty standard for drought response and planning. The standard does not include any mention of a three-year supply of water in order to be considered drought resilient. The exemption also does not factor in seasonal inflows or interannual variability of store, supply storage and does not appear to have any other supporting rationale. Our Kabul reservoir holds fifteen to twenty-four months of supply without any inflow and is an inter-year reservoir, meaning that storage carries over into the next year and one bad year would not lead to failure. Over the past five state drought declarations since twenty twenty-one, Kabul has remained within normal capacity levels. In fact, during one such declaration, Kabul was close to a hundred percent full. The commission revised its own drought management plan in twenty twenty. It uses both historic and synthetic scenarios to help predict the next twenty-four months of storage. We believe this carefully prepared plan should qualify us to enact our own appropriate water restrictions when necessary, rather than applying an arbitrary storage standard that obligates us to broad state impotence restrictions. Another key component of our opposition is the economic inequity this imposes on our customer base. Our retail rates are supplemented by revenue generated in surrounding wholesale communities. Unnecessarily restricting water use when we have plenty to sell creates upward pressure on retail rates for our customers in Springfield, particularly when we are embarking on a five hundred and fifty million dollar generational reinvestment of our water infrastructure over the next six years that will make our system more efficient, effective and climate resilient. Our financing plans are carefully calibrated to maintain and stabilize rates during this time. Losing control over our ability to sell water would upend these plans, leaving our customers more vulnerable to unaffordable rate increases. These are just a few of the reasons the commission is opposed and we will submit written comments as well. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Jamie. Um, Mr. Shea, you are next. Um, you win best background to date.
Thank you. That's Rocka Cashel in Ireland. Um, can you hear me okay?
I can. Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Thank you. I'm fortunate to say I'm a sixty-three year customer of the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission and a four-year academic year customer of Waltham's Water System and therefore the M W R A Quabin system. I've read the proposed regulations and am familiar with the original eighty-six act. I'm also familiar with the operations and finances of public and private water utilities as well as large-scale hydroelectric systems. What I'm seeing in the proposed regulations is the Massachusetts D E P attempting to regulate and solve problems that do not exist. The Springfield system originated in the mid nineteen, excuse me, mid eighteen hundreds and serves six municipalities and the Quabin began in the thirties. Supplies watered over fifty mostly eastern mass customers. Both systems reported normal reservoir levels and system capacity this summer during a period of low rainfall. As examples, both of these water registrants are large and well-managed entities. In fact, the business world and academia both say the best-run institutions, both public and private, are ones where decision-making is at the operating and local level. Therefore, why is the D E P attempting to micromanage these two well-run organizations as well as the other water registrants in the state? If these entities had no problems in twenty twenty-two, which is a low rainfall issue, what is the issue? Fatal flaw in the proposed regulations and in the operations of the drought task force, the assessment of drought conditions does not take into account the resource levels of specific reservoirs like Springfield's Cobble Mountain or the Quabin. I did hear the complicated and unnecessary three-year resource and triggers as an alternative, but awfully complicated. I can see why some systems that have low sa- safety capacity such as well lakes and ponds do need to be under the control of D E P. There are seven regions the drought management task force has identified. And those are implemented in terms of drought conditions across the board. The drought task force originally restricted and then banned all outdoor watering from June second through October sixth for large portions of Massachusetts. Meanwhile, Springfield, Quabin and other registrant resources were at normal levels. The proposed regulations are an admitted attempt to restrict water usage to levels asserted to be proper by the D E P as sixty-five gallons and referred to as a performance trigger. Took over ten minutes to describe these complicated restriction triggers. In any event, an effective date of April twenty twenty-three seems aggressive, to say the least. Speaker said the D E P is looking for uniformity and consistency. But that makes no sense if resource levels are not considered and one-size formulas are followed. In essence, it sounds like water socialism. In summary, the proposed regulations are an attempt to regulate and address problems that do not exist. The proposed regulations are unnecessary and an overreach to take away local control of water resources from the entity that manages those resources on behalf of its citizens and customers. The management of the water registrants have the power currently to enact resource or usage triggers if necessary, based on their intimate knowledge of the water resource and not broad one-size-fits-all edicts from Boston. The water registration system has been in effect since nineteen eighty-six, has withstood the test of time. The proposed regulations should not be enacted. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Uh, I look forward to your written comments. Um, Mr. Steven Oksansky.
Good morning, everyone, and, uh, great job with the pronunciation, Duane. Thank you. Appreciate. Um, Steve Boxanty, I'll be brief, but I'm here on behalf of the Green Industry Alliance of Massachusetts, and that's comprised of the Massachusetts Arborist Association, the Massachusetts Association of Landscape Professionals, the Mass Association of Lawn Care Professionals, the Irrigation Association of New England and the Golf Course Superintendent's Association of New England, uh, all, all of whom can be impacted by uh, restrictions on outdoor, non-essential outdoor water usage. Um, and I just want to make a couple of brief points. I did submit some written comments and we'll update those and send them in by November seventh, but flexibility, I think, is key. As we heard from the previous speakers, we support the idea that water systems, um, can develop their own plans and should be able to do that. It seems like they've been successful in doing that. And so the one-size-fits-all, when it comes to those restrictions, uh, may not be the, the right approach. Um, we would encourage D E P and then folks working on this to consider um, water systems and measuring them on the outcomes rather than sort of regulating how they achieve those outcomes. So we think giving that flexibility, system by system, is important. Um, let me move on a little bit here to talk a little bit about the one day per week. Um, to us, the one day per week has, has always been a little bit of a challenge and a little bit of a problem and not, maybe not the best approach. When we look at some of the other restrictions that the Water Management Act, uh, puts in place, like the sixty-five gallon per consumer per day standard or restriction or ceiling, whatever you want to call that. That, that makes sense. That's a limit on usage. And so we would like to see some more thought put into any restriction sort of fit that type of metric rather than one day per week. It's, it's just apples to oranges. And so when you, what we, what we've learned and what we've heard from customers is that when they're restricted to one day per week, they'll tend to use more water than they need to. And so we think there could be a much more sophisticated, uh, way to restrict that usage. If you put a percentage in there, if you put a, uh, you know, some type of metric, again, that is a numerical factor and not just a one day, which is a time factor that we, we think there's an opportunity there just to do a better job. So we'd encourage you to keep looking at that. Um, we think plans should also be encouraged to include educational and communication-based tools as a means to achieve greater conservation results. To this point, we think maybe a stakeholder group that consists of, uh, some of the water systems, some of the folks that are using the water and some residents as to what are the most effective tools to get people to comply? Uh, and it comply in a meaningful manner. So I'll throw that up there. It's a suggestion. Um, I do want to note that we support Mass Water Work Association's proposed definition on non-essential outdoor water use. I think they've submitted that into their written comments. Um, and so we're supportive of that as well. Uh, and the final point is just perspectives. Um, again, we, we think there are some voices that are maybe not being included here and not being heard. Uh, one specific example is UMass Extension, uh, turf program that recognizes the preeminent, preeminent authority in Massachusetts on horticultural and turf matters. Uh, they were a really uh, impactful and compelling voice on, on a lot of other regulations, most recently related to uh, the regulation of fertilizers and plant nutrients. So we think they're an important voice. We think, uh, homeowners and, and end users are an important voice. And we would encourage you to find ways to maybe bring those voices to the table. And again, the goal is to drive compliance with water restrictions when there's a drought. And so, uh, we think there may be some better ways to achieve those, uh, those lofty goals. We support those goals. We just think in today's world, there may be some other tools that are not being used right now. Uh, for example, you know, users with a smart uh, irrigation system have a lot of capability to reduce, uh, and, and use maybe one inch of water per week uh, over three days instead of just that one day metric. So those are some of the things we're talking about. I'll submit written comments. I appreciate the opportunity to speak up here. Thank you for your time today.
Uh, thank you. All right. I don't see anyone else who has requested yet, so I'll, I'll open the floor again. Is there anyone who would like to either turn the camera on and acknowledge they want to testify or raise their zoom hand to do so or put it in the chat, but I don't, I don't see anybody currently flagged. Um, extend the offer.
Can I just verbally correct, um, one thing I misspoke on? Just for the verbal record, Springfield, um, our Water Management Act withdrawal, um, allocation of thirty-nine point one M G D and we're currently averaging thirty M G D in withdrawals. So I just want to correct that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, um, we'll keep this open for a few minutes here, but, um, unless somebody else, um, I, I'd want to reinforce that uh, this forty-plus people in this meeting. So, um, feel free to submit your written comments. I do see now that Sarah Bauer has raised her hand. So Sarah, feel free to unmute.
Thanks, Duane. Can everybody hear me okay?
I'll be speaking on behalf of Mass Rivers Alliance. And after hearing some of the comments, you know, here today that mentioned that water resource problems in our state, quote, "don't exist," I want to start by painting the picture and reminding everyone of what we've really been seeing on the ground over the last few years as a direct result of both the effects of climate change and large water withdrawals. So back in 2020, you know, many of our rivers and streams hit record-low flows and even dried up in some pockets of our state. And drought was so severe that more than a handful of communities actually declared water supply emergencies. And this year's drought came with its own severe impacts. By August, the entire state had a declaration of at least moderate drought, which was the first time this has happened in over 20 years. And, you know, this is not, we're not just seeing the impacts in small headwater streams, but we're seeing them in our major rivers as well. I'd like to touch on, like, one example. We have over 80 member groups a part of Mass Rivers Alliance, and they submit photos and updates to us regularly for the drought management task force. And this past August, we had one of our members share that they did a multiple-day kayak trip to paddle the entire length of the Blackstone River. And they shared pictures with them actually literally having to carry their kayaks during portions of this trip because the parts of the Blackstone River were dried up and unnavigable. So I think this really emphasizes that water resource management in the face of climate change and worsening droughts is an urgent problem. And we strongly support Mass DEP's recent efforts to make our state more climate resilient with these proposed regulation changes. Under the current regulations, more than 50% of public water supply is exempt from any water conservation requirements. And when registrations were grandfathered into the program in the 1980s, we weren't thinking about climate change in the way that we really need to be today. And restricting non-essential outdoor water use during drought helps adapt those withdrawals to our reality and is necessary as a first step to improving water management in our state. Many of our state's sub-basins are severely groundwater depleted as a direct result of withdrawals. And we can see this in our, this swimming map that's available on Mass DEP's website. So conditioning registrations during drought is really the minimum that Mass DEP can do to protect water resources from excessive withdrawals. And it's important that we remember that all water is connected. So it's essential that our state has a consistent response to drought and that water users across the state, both permitted and registered, are held to the same accountability standards. And then lastly, I'd like to touch on the point of, you know, this consistency and the discussion around public parks specifically. Right now, the revisions exempt public parks from restrictions during drought. And we, you know, simply can't support this as the state should set an example and follow the limits that they're proposing to impose on everyone else. So at the very least, you know, there shouldn't be a blanket exemption, but we propose to either, you know, include a tiered response similar to that of golf courses or entirely follow the restrictions of the drought management plan. As well, we have no opposition to the long-term storage alternative and encourage DEP to keep this as a revision in the regulations. So with that, those are our comments, and I'd like to thank you again for this opportunity to speak and commend DEP for taking action to finally condition registered water use.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Would anybody else like to testify at this point? Again, let me check both screens. I don't see anybody stepping up. Courage anyone else? Now, now's a good time. I will say, I had a two-minute limit. I don't think we've lived a two-minute limit, but we're, so few people are stepping up. That's why I think we've been generous with our time. I don't have a problem with that, just to be consistent with our slides. That's the rationale I've been following. Ralph, I see that you've turned on your camera and unmuted. I'm assuming you want to speak?
Yeah, my name's Ralph Abel, and I'm a longtime water professional and recently retired. And I just want to say, as somebody who uses the Charles River and other rivers extensively and observes the effect of drought on the river, it's real. And there are areas that were impassable this year, inhibiting recreation. You could see acres and acres of dead mussels on the bottom of the river. So the effects of drought are real. And, you know, we can talk about the supply issues and all, but, you know, and towns being the best entities to measure and, excuse me, to protect the water supply. But we've got many of our rivers, most of our rivers are multi-jurisdictional. And what one town does well, another town may not do well. So I'm just saying that you need to think about the aquatic resource. At the same time, we're talking about all the restrictions because it really does take a hit in droughts, and that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Ralph. Jen, feel free.
Thanks, Dwayne. My name is Jennifer Peterson. I'm the Executive Director of Mass Waterworks Association. We are a nonprofit organization based in Acton, and I'm here to speak on behalf of our 1,400 members across the Commonwealth who work hard to provide critically important water service to residents and businesses in the state. I will also start by saying we are not opposed to wise water management, especially during times of drought. But this proposal does not consider that every public water system is unique. And this regulation and the state's broad drought plan do not consider a system's capacity or ability to serve even during times of drought. I want to state for the record that we have requested an extension to the public comment period because DEP just posted the notes to reviewer document yesterday. The public was not aware of this notice when the regulations were noticed. And given special attention being asked on the non-essential water use restrictions definition, there may be more groups who wish to weigh in on that particular issue, but might not have adequate time to do so by the November 7th deadline. We submitted substantial comments last summer, and the concerns raised in that letter still stand. As I stated, the drought plan is broad. It has many other metrics which are not water supply-related, which trigger drought declarations regardless of water supply capacity. This year is a good example where there were critical drought declarations in many regions, yet many of our water systems had no concern about capacity or their ability to meet demands this summer. Notably, we had a couple of water systems who were experiencing difficulty with their customers complying with restrictions and that they had to set, and that was even with a lot of outreach and the high visibility of drought conditions being projected by the media. It just shows how difficult water restrictions are to manage among the public. I will note that some water systems, even without conditions in their permits, mandating them to do so, did institute restrictions to be good stewards of the environment. I think there is a point of clarification for the record that I'd like to make. And I know DEP said in the slide that 85% of the volume of water allocated is registered. But DEP has also noted at prior public meetings that about 50% of the total allocation of water is touched by permit conditions. That point often gets lost in the discussion, and I want to just reiterate that not all of the registered volume is unconditioned. We believe that water use data does not support the need to condition registrations for public water systems holding only a registration. The fact is that in 35 years, they have not seen their water use increase above registered volumes. And in many instances, there have been decreases. They should be applauded for keeping their use below what was authorized in 1986 and not punished by imposition of arbitrary conditions. Water conservation and efficiency is not the same as drought response. The fact that registrants have been successful in conservation supports the point that they are good stewards of the resource and can be counted on to craft an appropriate response to drought. They need the flexibility to do so. I'm hoping that by now, everyone knows that it is abundantly obvious that operating a public water system is complex. Our operators must always be aware of unintended consequences that one action might have on another within the system. And while sounding well-intentioned, the proposed restrictions during drought stand to do more harm than they purport to prevent. Water restrictions could increase water age in the system, further exacerbating water quality concerns and compromising compliance with Safe Drinking Water Act requirements. Public water systems must evaluate water quality trade-offs when considering reducing flows. If they have capacity issues, they may have to make the difficult decision to risk water quality degradation to implement restriction to meet demand. When no capacity issues exist, implementing restrictions that risk water quality degradation do not make sense. Some of our water systems struggle with disinfection byproducts, and moving water through the system is important to keep those DBPs in check. The practical reality is that systems in this situation who have to restrict will likely have to flush that water they could be selling out of hydrant to maintain their water quality. This creates an unfortunate optic situation when you're telling people they cannot water, but then they see a hydrant flowing. I've been vilified by many for bringing up the fact that conditioning registrations will have financial impacts, but that's a fact. That several of my members well-articulated in their testimony last summer. DEP has done no analysis of what this regulation may cost to the regulated entities, which is a shortcoming of this regulatory process. We said in our comments before, and we still contend, that the proposed regulations will violate registrants' legal entitlements. DEP is basically not allowing these systems to access their full volume if you're mandating they restrict use during a drought. The multi-year storage definition is particularly problematic, and by DEP's own admission, not based in science, but what it believes is professional judgment. AWWA standards have water systems evaluating many conditions, but set no year of minimum storage in their guidance. The proposed regulations will not level the playing field. We know that. Will not impact use in private wells. MWRA will likely be the only system in the state to qualify for the alternative restrictions approach. No one will contend that they shouldn't have that option, but others should also have that option. So we do believe there's a better alternative to these regulations. We're fully supportive of drought planning and preparedness. The alternative regulatory approach we would suggest is that DEP should move forward with an amendment to 310 CMR 220413 to ensure that every public water system in the state has a system-specific drought plan as a component of their emergency response plan. You could put a timeframe on that, like within five years of promulgation of the regulation. And that drought plan would contain triggers and response actions based on the water system's capacity. Mass Waterworks contends that this will provide a much more meaningful opportunity to enhance water system's resiliency to climate change than the current regulatory proposal. So given all these reasons, Mass Waterworks respectfully requests that DEP withdraw these proposed regulations and work with us on that alternative approach. We will be submitting further written comments, and again, are anxious to hear about our request to extend the public comment deadline. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Would anyone else like to take the floor at this point? I don't see anyone doing so. You're all, if, again, feel free to turn your camera on, and I'll recognize you that way as well.
Dwayne, I see there is one phone caller who, if that person would like to speak, I think they need to hit pound six to unmute or star six. I'm sorry, I don't remember which, but I think it's one or the other.
And that phone caller is 7966. If you would like to unmute and say anything, as Kathy said, hit pound six, do so now. Okay. I'm not seeing any, so. All right, we know who our phone caller is. Thank you, Danielle. All right. Well, without a, anyone identifying that they want to speak, I think we can close this hearing, Kathy.